We're going to go ahead and call the special session of the Bloomington City Council, Connect Transit Boards and the Library Board to order. And we're going to start with each of the governmental units. And the first is Bloomington City Council, and where is my -- there's my clerk. Would you call the role for the Bloomington City Council, please? Thank you.
Argument Matthew.
Here.
Argument Sage. Argument Longway. Argument Burgess.
Here.
Argument Pater. Argument Schmidt. Argument Black.
Here.
Argument Harmon.
Here.
Amendment Gray.
Here.
And Mayor Brenner. Here. Thank you very much, but we're all here. We have a forum. And then I will turn this over to Mike McCurdy from Connect Transit.
I'm Chairman of Connect Transit Boards, Mike McCurdy. We'll call a roll. Vice Chair, Brian Whitehouse.
Here.
Trustee John Bowman.
Here.
Trustee James Cannon.
Here.
Trustee Monica Bloomington.
Here.
Trustee Jennifer McDade.
Here.
And Trustee John Thomas.
Here.
Thank you. We have a full board.
Full board. And go to Alex Cardona, Chair of the Library Board.
Okay, I'm going to actually ask Jeanne Hamilton, our director, to give a call role for us.
Cardona.
Here.
Alicia Henry.
Here.
Kasha Henry. Hollister.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Westerhoff.
Whitworth.
Thank you very much. At this point, we have public comment, and I'm going to call public comment for all three bodies. There are three individuals who have requested public comment that I have in front of me, and I'm going to call them in the order in which they were presented. And I'm going to list them, and then you have up to three minutes. Glenn Ludwig, Josh Barnett, and Vicki Tilton. And so Glenn, I do see Glenn.
Stand here if you want.
Pardon me? You can, if you'd stand up.
Okay. Well, I'm going to kind of make this short. I live out of Astoria Way from the east side because it has some impact on what I might say. I live in a homeowners association, 66 houses there, probably 120 people, average age 65 or over. I'm not an official representative of the group at all, but I think that my opinions probably line up with the opinions of a lot of my neighbors. I applaud the effort that you're putting forward tonight to listen and get the input. That's important. One of the things that comes to my mind is, is that a lot of the problems we seem to have in our larger community here is that these decisions were made in the past that we're living with now that were based on really flawed assumptions. And I wasn't here 25 years ago, but I'm guessing 25 years ago that the thought was that the twin city, our region, might have 200,000 population. I'm guessing that Bloomington and Normal had them together tonight, probably 125,000. So we're short of what we thought we were going to be, so we did some overbuilding and so on and so forth, which we're having to deal with now, which is really too bad to think about it. I'm not going to say much about Connect Transit because they've heard enough from me in the past, I kind of give up going to the meetings because I didn't think I was having much impact. I do know that we got capacity beyond demand, and that's a problem. And I come from agriculture background, and the problem can be best described in my terms is, is that it would be like managing a country elevator where they receive corn and soybeans at harvest. If you built 10 years ago for a cornfield of 300 bushels per acre in McLean County, you're suffering today because you're over, you've got capacity far more than what the marketplace is demanding. Library-wise, I don't know, I think that there are probably very few from my side of town that come down to use the library. My best input on library is my daughter, who has got a young, my great-granddaughter, when I was talking to my daughter the other evening and asking her about the library and so forth, and she said that her granddaughter and my great-granddaughter probably wouldn't go to the library much because she thought she'd be reading most of her reading online and so on and so forth, although, and that surprised me, I didn't know that things would change in that fact. I guess I would have one question, which you're not going to answer because you're not going to answer questions tonight, but I would hope that at some time in the past that the Bloomington Library and the Normal Library had some sit downs and talking about how can we collaborate. Downtown-wise, I've got one suggestion there. Let's convert the DCPA to private public library slash gathering place. That would be my suggestion.
Glenn, I'm sorry, that's a few times.
Okay, is that it?
Yeah.
Didn't know I was on the eight timer.
Thank you.
Next is Josh Barnett and then Vicki Tilton. Thank you, Mayor Renner, and Chairman McCurdy, and President Cardona for allowing me to speak here, a public comment for just a moment. I wanted to come before these three bodies and just, not necessarily advocate for this project or new library and expansion, but just to be an advocate for you to be open to having discussion. It is always warmed my heart when different bodies of government are able to come together and to have open, honest dialogue with one another, especially when there is a project like this that is being considered. This is a, I would say, a once-in-in every other generation project that we're talking about here, either expanding or relocating our library, and it deserves open, honest communication and discussion among all of you who are gathered here. And I just want to encourage you to do that. And also, while you're doing that, to do so in the context of the Bloomington Comprehensive Plan. As a former member of the city's planning commission, the Comprehensive Plan is very near and dear to my heart. And when you're having your conversation this evening and you're putting some plans together and you're chatting back and forth, I just encourage you to consider that through the context of the Comprehensive Plan and to think through, what does the Comprehensive Plan call for us to do? What is its vision for our city? And to frame your conversations with that. So thank you so much, Mayor Renner, and Chairman McCurdy, and President Cardona.
Thank you, Josh. Vicki Tilton.
I don't want to care because my voice is going to be as strong as theirs. Good evening, Connect Transit Board members, Bloomington Library Board, Mayor Renner, and City Council members, and any of the task force that are here. First, I want to commend Mayor Renner for moving ahead to hold this meeting so that we, the public and the media, can get a clearer picture of the catalyst project that's been discussed by our downtown Bloomington Task Force. I believe there are many points of this idea, and it is just an idea at this stage, that have not been understood and even reported unfairly. There is a constant confusion that all parking will be lost. That's not true. I repeatedly see news reports that the Library Board and the Connect Transit are greatly opposed to this. And yet, when I see you all gathered here this evening to discuss your needs and to explore the opportunities that this might give you, I think that's not quite true either. I believe these conversations should explore more fully how this project could fill the needs for Connect Transit, the library, and the city. There are many opportunities that will show themselves just by tonight's sharing of thoughts. We should certainly consider associated costs and cost savings that might afford the taxpayers. I would ask, if this is, if this is a more cost-effective approach than, say, the expansion of the library, and we don't address it, are we not being very irresponsible to not at least look at it? I don't know what the outcome of tonight's dialogue will be, but when we shut down communications, we are shutting down possibilities of finding solutions that will benefit our community. In the future, I encourage you to continue these open conversations, to explore viable ideas, and to keep a clear vision of the roadmap that we have been given in the Comprehensive Plan, Josh, that was approved by this council two and a half years ago. Let's not only talk this evening, let's respectfully listen to each other with these organizations and what the city has to say. Please open your minds to not only the possibilities for the Market Street Garage location, but also the existing library location and the bus transfer area in front of Law and Justice Center. The task force has worked very hard on this. Let's take it seriously and show them the respect that they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you, Vicki. Thanks. And again, just to clarify, this is the second of a part of the report from the downtown task force, and they will begin to present some of that information, and then we will, because it involves this as an anchor project, and the more detailed report was last week in terms of some of the, perhaps, well, the non-anchor project information. So at this point, I'm going to turn this over, oh, yes, let the record show that all the bulk of the long way has joined us. All right, at this point, I'm going to turn this over to the chairman of our downtown task force, and that's Alwoman Amelia Burgess, who can speak to us for about five minutes.
Thank you, Mayor Renner, and I wrote out my comments to guarantee that I will stick with five minutes. But thank you. As Mayor Renner noted, I had the opportunity to serve as the chairman of the downtown task force, and greatly appreciate the opportunity to work with the other members of the task force on some of the important issues facing our downtown area. The downtown task force was formed last year to prioritize action items for the continued revitalization of downtown Bloomington over the next three to five years. The action items were to be grounded in the planning documents that have been formally ratified by council, including the city's comprehensive master plan and the downtown strategy. The majority of the task force work focused on smaller, easier-to-achieve projects with a high potential return on investment. Following the guidance of the downtown strategy plan, the task force also made recommendations related to potential catalyst projects. The task force defined catalyst projects as only those projects that have the potential to bring in large numbers of people to the downtown area on a daily basis. The downtown strategy plan identified three potential non-retail catalysts for the downtown area: the YSCA, the public library, or community college. The task force further explored the possibility of a library catalyst, since the need for expansion of that facility has been publicly discussed for quite some time. This focus was also consistent with the comprehensive plan, which advises as follows: Those facilities that serve the entire community, such as the Bloomington Public Library, should be located in the city core, preferably the downtown district. This area of Bloomington is accessible, and the concentration of facilities intended for all community members increases their ease of use. The task force also explored potential locations. The downtown strategy plan identified the Market Street Garage as a prime sign for redevelopment and described it as, quote, "one of the largest redevelopment parcels in downtown." It also noted that the Market Street Garage is a great opportunity to kickstart development in the downtown area. The Market Street parking deck also is in declining condition and is reaching the end of its usable lifespan. The task force recognized that any recommendation to redevelop the Market Street parking parcel or parking deck must include a plan for replacement of the lost parking, and the Tier One recommendation reflects this knowledge. Connect Transit was identified as a potential partner for a catalyst project because the comprehensive plan identifies the need to upgrade the front street transfer location as a short-term priority. The task force was pleased to learn that partnering with Connect Transit could provide an alternative source of funding through federal grants and low-interest loans. Ultimately, the task force made three recommendations for catalyst projects that were placed into tiers based on the following criteria: current opportunities, level of risk, availability partnerships, and overall community needs. The Tier One recommendation was to redevelop the Market Street Garage into a mixed-use facility, including parking, a transfer station, and a new public library. The task force report notes that if inclusion of the library in this project is not feasible, there are other options, such as residential or office space. The Tier Two project recommends acquisition and redevelopment of vacant property and continued pursuit of a viable hotel conference center in the area. And the Tier Three recommendation is to incentivize redevelopment of surface parking lots into mixed-use projects with an emphasis on ground floor retail and upper-level housing. Please note that these recommendations are areas identified for potential exploration. The task force is aware and notes in this report that a great deal of due diligence and public dialogue must be undertaken before the city could ever be in a position to afford on any project with the scale of catalysts that are required. That being said, I thank Mayor Renner and the Bloomington City Council, as well as Connect Transit and the Bloomington Public Library Board for providing this forum to begin that conversation, and I look forward to hearing from our community partners this evening.
Next, Connect Transit. Should I sit or stand?
I stand.
Stand, please.
Okay.
Isaac Thorne is our general manager.
To give a background, Connect Transit, our transfer center location, our planning, funding, and our goals of this project. Connect Transit serves 1,500 passengers per day on average, Monday through Friday at the Front Street location. It's been a transfer location for almost 30 years. Currently, nine different routes serve the downtown location, and Connect Transit doesn't have the required space to fit all nine buses simultaneously. Connect uses Front Street by the Law and Justice Center for live buses, and the north side of Front Street for two additional buses. The last two buses arrive after the first seven buses depart. This inconveniences customers trying to transfer, adding to their weight and reducing connectivity of the overall bus network. A new downtown transfer center will allow to reduce inefficiencies that limit the current Front Street Transfer Center facility. The new facility reduces the time and mileage required to go around the block to make each route aligned perfectly with Front Street. These increasing routing inefficiencies or efficiencies will allow for maximized on-time performance in and out of downtown Bloomington, improving system performance. In the event of a delay, however, the new transfer center will be able to provide real-time customer information to customers, making them aware of potential detours, alternative routing options, which Connect Transit is unable to provide at its current Front Street location. The transfer center will improve access for existing transit users and transit-dependent customers by providing a safe and convenient place to access transit. Other elements include customer service opportunities, such as a customer service desk. Customers will be allowed to access increased real-time plus tracking information arriving in part of the buses. When interacting with the community, and specifically transit users, Connect Transit regularly adheres to a desire for more services and more transit infrastructure. The increased transportation choices provided by the new transfer center will encourage current riders to choose downtown Bloomington as their destination and will be a driver for new choice riders to view public transportation as an option. Connect Transit Board has made a new transfer center location a priority in the three-year strategic plan. Addressing the downtown transfer center has been a longtime goal. Over the last five years, Connect has attempted to secure state and federal funding to improve or move the transfer center location. In December, following the downtown task force report, Connect contracted with Farnsworth Group to identify the square footage needs of the transfer center for the passenger waiting area and that would fit 10 or 11 buses simultaneously. After Farnsworth Group has presented to the Connect Transit Board, a trustee's presentation will be offered to the city of Bloomington Council. The next step in the planning process is to conduct a feasibility study reviewing up to three possible locations in downtown Bloomington and how it will affect the current routing and timing of these possible locations. Before the feasibility study is started, a public process, a public comment process will be developed to ensure customers and stakeholders may give an ample opportunity to voice, to have their voices heard. Public presentations will also take place in regards to feasibility study process and final report. Once the site needs analysis and feasibility study has been conducted, it gives Connect Transit the opportunity to apply for federal state funding for the project. It may take three to five years to secure the funding for a new, to build and fund a new transit center. This is why it's so important to start the process now and have a set location selected. Connect will work to coordinate partner of transportation and the U.S. Department of Transportation to approve our grant application every year. Goals to fund this project through partnerships, grants, and our local capital account. Connect Transit is looking forward to staying in this conversation and exploring other public-private partnerships. Connect is committed to examine all opportunities as they arise in addition to developing opportunities with public or private partners in the community to help achieve one of our most important strategic goals, which is to build a new downtown transfer center. Connect Transit is looking, oh, sorry. Connect hopes to partner with the city of Bloomington to accomplish shared goals. Connect Transit more welcomes conversation with the council on their desires and how we can work together to build a new downtown transfer center. Connect hopes to provide information on our needs and listen to the needs of the city and library.
Thank you very much, Isaac. Jeanne's going to, Jeanne Hamilton's going to present. Hold on.
Today's library was built in 1976 for a population of 41,000 people. It was renovated in 2006, which included flipping the building to face the parking lot and enclosing a portion of the lower-level, open-air-covered parking to gain 7,000 square feet of internal space. That brings it to a total of 57,700 square feet and 70 spaces in our parking lot. Multiple studies since 2000 have determined that we actually need 98,765 square feet for our population. Since the renovation in 2006, we've seen a 73% increase in circulation and a 13% increase in program attendance. So this means that we have inadequate parking right now. Frequently, library visitors have to circle the parking lot to find a place to park and/or leave without coming in due to lack of parking. Our collection is 4,000 items less than our standards recommend, and is shelved tighter than recommended. This leads to discarding materials sooner than we would like, and a collection this full can actually lead to decreased circulation because it's harder for people to browse and find what they're looking for. Our demand exceeds capacity for programming. We have to turn people away or have waiting lines for more popular programs. For example, our beginning-of-summer reading party last year drew in over 700 people. This was a drop-in program that expanded to our window, and it required a bouncer to ensure we didn't exceed fire code, and we had a line from the room to the entrance the entire time. Teen zone activities often have, we've had to institute wait lists for the services in that area, and group study spaces are almost always booked. We only have two group study rooms in our building. And we also have inefficient staff areas. One office has an ethernet cord that's taped around the entire room because the area was designed prior to the internet. One manager has an office wall that doesn't reach the ceiling, requiring extensive conversations to take elsewhere, and we've often taken hits on the staff side to make sure that the public area is, gets the better aesthetics. Our funding that we have available for our project with our existing reserve and estimated fundraising capacity is about $5.1 million. And so far to date, since 2000, the library has developed three long-range strategic plans focused on buildings, conducted three needs assessments, conducted two community surveys, explored nine-plus potential sites for expansion and branches, and some of those were explored with the Normal Public Library, hired three different architect projects, and presented seven different project proposals to city council. And three different joint city council and library board task force have been made over the year. Most of these were at the request of city council. Approximately $140,000 has been spent by the library, but I would say not all of those are sunk costs. Some of those costs are for long-range plans or building programs that can be reused no matter the location. Our most recent work included conceptual site plans for expansion on our current site, which has been presented to the council. We currently have a proposal awaiting board consideration that would further develop these site designs and incorporate conversations with city staff representatives like Public Works and Planning, and we hoped, we would hope to have that work, if approved, completed in time for budget considerations this year in case any preparation projects need to be incorporated in next year's budget. Alex is going to pass out a paper timeline of what's happened since 2006. We have enough for the people at the tables, and then we have extra copies, probably not enough for all of the public, but it will be available on our website, and you can also request it from whoever. So what do we need? The library really needs a resolution. A conversation about our need to expand has been going on since 2000. We are in a cyclical holding pattern, and we have $2-plus million in deferred maintenance. We're trying to be good fiscal stewards by deferred maintenance until we come to some sort of resolution, but some of those projects can't wait much longer. A resolution would include the direction that we should go and a commitment to go in that direction.
Thank you. Very much. At this point, I'm going to turn this over to Stacy and Deb, who are facilitators. They have agreed to volunteer their time because we've got quite a few stakeholders. What will happen, they will explain the process. When we break up, well, we're not going to break, we are in small groups. There, there's no quorum of any group at any individual table. We will need to recess, and then we will come back into session. Everything that's being said at each table is being recorded. That will be part of the public record, but I was advised by legal counsel in excess of cautiousness, just to be absolutely certain, we want to make sure that there are no questions whatsoever in terms of Open Meetings Act, because normally, the public would be able to listen as people are talking. So we will recess, and then we will come back and into session after all of the group discussions are finished. So I'm just explaining that part of the process. I'll turn it over to Deb and Stacy, who can explain the questions and the process.
My name is Deborah Halpin. I run the Action Research Center at Illinois Wesleyan University. This is Stacy, that is Stacy Tuck, getting tech all set up. She's the director of the Community Preservation Clinic at the University of Illinois College of Law, where she is also a professor. Tonight, we are talking about a big idea with a lot of moving parts. No one knows where this process might take us, and we might even uncover some surprises at some point down the road. Tonight is not about finalizing decisions, and we will not be voting. Tonight is about exploring opportunities. Everyone says that our community needs more collaboration, and this is what that looks like. Invested, caring leaders in a room using their creativity, strategic thinking, and experience to think about what the future might look like. So we want you all to talk and brainstorm and ask questions and make connections because that is how we will move forward. There are a lot of ways to say no, and people can be really quick to put up barriers, but let's commit to listening to all voices and concerns. Honor that everyone came here tonight to have an open discussion, because there's a lot of potential for us to talk about. So with that, I'll turn it over to Stacy.
All right, thank you very much, Deb. So what we're going to be doing now is posing questions to all of you, and then allotting you a specific amount of time in which to discuss them in your small groups, and then you'll be recording them out afterwards as to, really just a summary of what those discussions were. So I want to let you know that as we format of these questions, the first half, we have 90 minutes that have been allocated for this. So the first half is focused primarily on discussions regarding the catalyst project and thinking that through, and giving you opportunity to reflect on the information that was learned here today, as well as your thoughts on moving forward. After that first half, we will then, on the second half, focus more particularly on the library's expansion and the work that they've done thus far, and again, a discussion of next steps for them and feasibility of those things. So just to give you a roadmap as to how the discussion is going to be going, I'm going to start us out here with our first question.
Just to, just as a question, in addition to the questions that the groups will get, I'm sure there'll be questions from the group members that can be asked at the latter session.
Yes, and that's the idea here. This is right now, what we're trying to do is allow you to have that discussion amongst your groups rather than as a large whole, just because of the fact of our sheer number and volume that we're dealing with, that if we launch into questions right now from the entire group, we would not be able to effectively have that discussion, which is why we're giving an opportunity within the small groups, and then a recording out and a reflection on that. All of this will be memorialized into a report that we as facilitators will provide to each of the boards to have an opportunity to review and look at the materials that were provided and what information was gathered. And I will let you know, one of the things that we are looking to establish with this is what are the next steps in this, what additional information is needed for decisions to be made, and are allowing time for a brainstorming session at the end to fully flush out those questions and concerns that individuals may have. Yes.
Thank you, Stacy. You may mention you have some questions. Where, where do these questions come from? Who created these questions?
These questions were developed as us as facilitators, and they were somewhat provided, and the structure that we had is, and prior to this time, we also circulated an online survey to all of the attendees here that are part of these discussion groups. Now, regrettably, in a survey format, those questions had to be very narrow and focused on issues that have risen in all the publicly available reports. So those questions were very narrow and structured that way because that's how surveys have to be in order to have quantifiable analytical data that we can then summarize and provide. The whole point of this discussion is to allow you to talk more openly amongst yourselves. If you look at the makeup of the tables here that we have provided, there are representatives from city council, there are representatives from the Connect Transit, and representatives from the public library. That is, so you each are getting to act and engage in the discussion amongst yourselves, and then, as I said, we're going to be reporting those out.
So Stacy, just to follow up in regards to that. So the city council did not have input into this question set?
That is correct. These questions were established by us as facilitators. We're the ones who made those decisions and determinations.
And Stacy, did the downtown task force have input into these questions?
No, we are the sole authors of the questions, both of the survey, as well as with the questions we are posing here today. None of those came from any of those individuals. Again, regrettably, we're very short on time. If you have additional questions about what we have done and our process, we'll be able to go into those. I'll go ahead and take one more question because I don't want to cut you off on that, but I do have to be very cognizant that we're given 90 minutes and we're on a very set schedule in order to be able to maintain that. So yes.
Where are the survey results? Who has those? Are they publicly available?
They are not yet. We will be producing that information as part of our final We will be producing that information as part of our final report, but we didn't want to, uh, publish that information without giving an opportunity for people to have, able to answer and discuss and have a more, um, in-depth conversation because survey answers can be very limited. So that survey data, though, it will be made available. We wanted to give everybody an opportunity to have further discussions and thought before we produce that information.
So are you truly the only people who've seen any of those results?
Yes, I have not shared those. Those have not gone out. They have not been published or reported except with Deb and I sharing that information amongst ourselves. We have reported the number who responded to it out to other entities as part of our planning process just to get a sense of how much information was provided. But that is all the information that we've really given in regards to that survey. Otherwise, it has not been produced or published for anyone.
And I just to understand context, so the survey that was created, did the, did the city council execute in the survey?
No, this design was completely ours. We base this on our experience facilitating other large meetings and collaborations in the past. So the design and all of that is completely of our own making.
And did the downtown task force ask you to do a survey?
No, no one did.
Who asked you to do a survey?
No one asked us to do a survey. This design was our design that we came up with based on our experience on facilitating meetings of this size.
And what was your focus for your survey?
The focus of the survey was very broad and again, we're gonna be reporting that out later and so this is not a field appropriate time for us to go into the survey information. We'll include all of that in our report for the entire public to be able to see, including all of that information. So at this time, what I'd like to do is go ahead and pose the first question to our group. What we're gonna do is as soon as I get done in asking this question, we're gonna take a recess. And it's gonna be a fifteen-minute recess to allow you to then discuss, okay? Because for our open meetings act, we wanna make sure we're having those recesses in place. Once that fifteen minutes is up, we will then reconvene the meeting and give each group an opportunity to summarize what happened. We would ask you to pick one individual in your group to do the summations. Given the number of questions, each one of you should have an opportunity to summarize for your group at least once. So we're gonna try to keep this very equitable, giving everybody equal opportunity to be able to provide the information out to all of us. So with that in mind, I'm gonna go ahead and ask the first question. I will then write it on the board because it can be a little bit layered. It's like you get from the lawyer asking a question. There'll be a little bit of layering to this and hopefully some of the information already obtained in the presentations will helpful in your discussions as you're talking about these things. And then, like I said, we'll call the recess, set the timer, and go from there. So our first question that we have is, if the catalyst project were to move forward, what would be the ideal conditions for it to be completed? Please include timeframes for the project, potential funding sources, and those individuals who would be decision-makers in that. Who would have to decide in order to participate, in order to make the catalyst project come to fruition? So that is our first question. You now have fifteen minutes to go ahead and go into that discussion and I now call a recess. Or do you have to call the recess?
I have to call the recess. We, we, all boards will be recessed, uh, yeah, all.
I have a question about the question. So you say the catalyst project, the downtown task force.
The tier one catalyst project is the one I want that we wanted to discuss. So that whole combined project involving the Market Street Garage, the catalyst tier one project.
So any questions or concerns we have, we put that down?
Yes.
Okay, so we are, we are hereby recessed for fifteen minutes. Thank you. Just as mayor, it would probably be better for me to not be the one, uh, unless I run the time and I can do it. And I think, uh, Alex should do it. But this is just. So this is just the first one, but the first one, obviously. Who needs to be in this room? We have to be the city council.
There we go. Uh, first, before I turn the floor over and give each table an opportunity to record out on their discussion, Deb and I were walking around the room and it was, I was very heartened to hear the discussions that were going on, that each person seemed to be talking and really, each group is talking and fleshing out ideas and thinking through things and it was just wonderful to hear, uh, those discussions happening. So at this point in time, I'm gonna turn the floor over. So at this point in time, I'm going to turn the floor over to this table first to be our first ones to report out.
Just one quick question. If we. Is the. For each table, we got someone. Is only one person to speak?
Only one person from each table. That's your spokesperson. And you get a total of two minutes to summarize what the discussion was. Which is why we tried to go around and warn you about the two minutes and make sure you had your speaker. And then what we will be doing is we are memorializing all of these. And again, it will be put into a final report of the themes and points that were made and discussed throughout the course of this facilitation. So.
So. It took us about half the time to actually get around to the part where we understood that this was if the catalyst project were to move forward. What would the ideal conditions to be? So. Because the first half of the conversation was how does the catalyst project move forward at all? And then when we got to talking about the situation, what it would look like. I think that we were pretty unified that it needs to be a comprehensive public referendum. Where the taxpayers of the city of Bloomington need to say that yes, we are willing to. To entertain the idea of a combined library transit and parking facility and are willing to pay for such a project. So. You know. There's still issues where we can have unified boards for library and for connect transit, but the buck stops at city council. And city council needs to realize that as well. But you know, I think that we were all pretty unified on the idea of a public referendum if this was going to happen.
Thank you very much. Now we'll go on here to this, our second table to report out.
Okay. If. If in fact, the catalyst project were to move forward. We were in agreement that partnership is, is an ideal. We would have to have that with the city council being the prime partner. But we'd do a partnership. In the absence of the council, we'll support endorsement and engagement. We don't see that moving forward. We think that three to five years is the ideal in terms of the timeframe. I think we would more realistically suggest three to 10 years, particularly in view of where we are now and where the funding sources that might be available will, will be contacted. Decision makers, as I said, will have to be with the council. In terms of funding. That is whether it's a referendum, whether it's additional tax, property tax, others, or whether it is all grants. That's something that we didn't really get into. We're just going to take quite a while to put that together.
And we do recognize that. So thank you very much for that. Now we'll move on to.
May I ask that? Would you speak if you announced? Please. That way I can.
Thank you. Do we all hear that? If you can, please announce your name before you speak and are reporting out.
Okay.
Let me go ahead and have a table report out.
Sure. This is Connect Transit Chair Mike McCurdy. There was some significant discussion at our table about whether or not this question was premature. Based on the task forces. The word was rigor given to the project. The argument on the other side was that perhaps this is the discussion that needs to happen and that this is part of the rigor. At the risk of putting words in people's mouths. There was some discussion of the need for a feasibility study. There was discussion of how the project. How this catalyst project would intersect with the current capital improvement program of the city. There's an issue with deferred maintenance with the current library location. There's $2 million in deferred, in deferred maintenance that needs to, needs to be addressed rather soon. Funding sources are fairly obvious. State, federal grants, as well as possibility of federal loans and the possibility of local dollars. The decision makers, library, council, transit, and the community. And if there's anything anyone else would like to add to this table, since there was a significant discussion of whether or not that speak as well. Okay.
All right. Then we'll go ahead and move back to this table here.
Yeah, I think we, our table had a hard time understanding the question as well. So we spent. I'm sorry. Connect Transit is the manager. We had some issues trying to understand the question. But I, I think what we did talk about the most long was just the timeline between what Connect Transit is trying to do with applying for state and federal grants. And where the library is and moving those, both those projects forward. It would at least take three to five years at a minimum just to maybe fund the project. We also talked about the funding of future operations. We kind of off topic a lot, but that's mainly what we talked about. It's funding sources and actual timelines of the project.
All right. Thank you very much. And then our last table, please.
I'm Scott Black. I approve this matter. So we talked at least about 80% of it was about all of the groups' concerns with the project. Whether it be timelines, funding, all the obvious questions. In terms of. What, a lot of the focal point was about public buy-in. It may not have been as robust a conversation at the table over there, but just getting an overall sense of public buy-in for this tier-one catalyst project. And that can come in the form of potentially more than a majority of the city council. Also, there is concern about is the site enough sufficient for the organization and the committees that are involved in the work? Security concerns recited for the library's end as well as if this is even appropriate for staffing needs. How do you deal with, you know, having kids coming in out of the library? When you've got buses coming in as well? Those questions would have to be answered concurrently. Timeline. We talked about, you know, decisions would probably have to be made to even want to move forward to answer some of these questions probably sooner than later, the next three to six months. We may see some revenue from city bonding, tighter grants, federal funding, if that's even available. But ultimately, potentially a library property tax increase would likely have to fund some of this. And it all concurrent with just making sure the boards and the public are on board with moving forward.
I do want to clarify one point. This is Jeanne Hamilton. Library security concern was not having too many floors. Not actually the site built. But the more floors you have, the more staffing needs.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you.
That is very helpful. All right. Thank you to all of our groups for the discussion and the points that were made through that. As I said, we've made notes on that and we'll summarize those later on. Our next question is to give you an opportunity to talk a little bit more about the tier-one catalyst project. Now for this question, we're only looking for a shorter, five-minute discussion amongst you before we are then going to start discussing the library's expansion. And so this next one, we're looking at this in a bit more focused way. Taking some of what you all said here about you identified, even though we encourage you to be idealistic about how to make everything work. You actually identified a lot of barriers that you saw rather than the things that came together that might actually make this project more feasible versus less. But as you have identified those things, and there were a number of ideas that were circulated. We heard about maybe potentially that we need a referendum, other ideas and a lot of discussion about funding. I think the question that I really want you to delve out, as you have already identified a number of barriers that you're perceiving in this. Like you to talk, and as you've heard all of these barriers and concerns that have been raised. What do you think is the biggest barrier that has to be overcome? And that is the question. What do you think is going to be one of the most challenging aspects of the catalyst tier-one project moving forward? What is the most challenging aspect of it? So at that point in time, mayor, would you be willing to call a recess for us?
We will be recessed for the purposes of these private group discussions. At this point. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would say plenty in public buy-in. Triple. Well, and then also timing. Right? So. Your time is. Five minutes. Why not? I'm down. I'm down. Uh huh. Uh huh. Next. 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 Say that. Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. 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 So. All right. I'll find out. It's in front of us. It's in front of you. I have. I know. This is. And our. This. Why? 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 Sure. Like. Yeah. Yeah. No, I. I think. International. Which is. We've got. We've got. We've got. We've got. Sure. I'll play.
You can take this one too.
Our time is up on that question.
Alright, if everyone have a seat, we're gonna reconvene briefly so that everyone can report their findings out. And I'm looking over Jamie, are you still the chair? Book person?
I can be.
Oh, I'm gonna switch gears. I'll let this table report out first and we're gonna come back around, okay?
Everybody, move back in session.
Do you have someone to report out? I'm gonna start with you.
This is Jeanne Hilton. We have two words, five letters, buy-in.
Alright, nice and quick. Next group.
Van Miller from Bloomington Public Library, shared vision.
Alright. And our group right here?
We have a list.
Mike McCurdy.
So...
Can you say your date first?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Mike McCurdy, Connect Transit, we're chair, going to pick one or give the list?
You can give the list, we have time.
The Coliseum, public perception that the public, the Coliseum may have poisoned the discussion, that the public perception that the public is not heard in the discussion. There was discussion about public perception deliberation state put, also need public buy-in and then dollars.
Alright, thank you very much. Our next group, please.
Short and sweet. Biggest barriers: fear, trust, public perception.
Alright, thank you very much.
Ours is gonna echo everybody else's very closely that we don't think that there's public buy-in for the project because we don't know that there's unified public vision for our community.
Alright, thank you very much. That was very helpful to hear that kind of group discussion as well as the points that were made. Now, you've been very fast in reporting out your information, so you're gonna be rewarded with one extra question regarding the Catalyst Project before we switch gears and talk more about the library expansion. So, we asked, and you've been very good at identifying concerns or barriers or questions that you have. Now, what we would like to do is ask you, what benefits do you believe would be gained by the city, Connect Transit, and public library if the project moved forward? So again, we're kinda making an assumption that it is moving forward. What benefits would these different entities obtain by moving the project forward? Okay? Mayor, could you have us go into recess, please?
We're going into recess while we discuss this. Thank you.
And I should mention five minutes to discuss that. What motivates you that?
Yeah, sorry.
Thank you.
But there is no library. Or no, we'll send them to the council.
Alright, question number three. We're back here.
Okay, so we are back in session.
Alright, thank you. Okay, we'll go ahead and start with this table here.
Okay, so benefits, Jamie Mackey, City Council. Benefits, we put in here. So convenience, from a Connect Transit point of view, definitely convenience, safety, warmth for folks that are using the service. Close parking. And maybe convenience for library customers, but we're not 100% sure we're seeing the benefits of the library there. Transit, I mean, there's definite benefits if there's a combination with the parking deck and transit being available there. We think that that works really well.
Alright, thank you very much. Our next group here?
Drew Buchanan, Connect Transit Trustee. Our benefit is the potential, the possibility of Connect Transit being able to garner or at least identify and actually accrue several resources. Another benefit is the potential of multiple constituencies being engaged and that being achieved well in the public. Third benefit is the plans and strategic plans of all three bodies have identified some of the things that we're talking about, the need for transit to have a much different multi-site center than for the library, the national efficient space. And so, that being said, they're all in your debt with the other.
Alright, thank you very much. Okay, we'll come up here to this table.
Automatically brings more people to downtown Bloomington, to the buckle, inside the buckle. More safe, comfortable Connect Transit Transfer Center. Those are our two.
Alright, thank you very much. And our group back here. I'll go to you.
Diana Hellman, City Council. We look at a jumpstart in downtown that when people see that the public entity is invested in itself, that private entities are more apt to follow suit with that. So downtown and book, downtown economic development increases. Potential benefits to library patrons and Connect Transit writers, potential cost savings. Oh, and DOT?
Potential funding sources.
Potential funding sources, yeah. For, well, at least for Connect Transit and the library, and then an increase in the vibrancy of downtown.
Thank you very much. And our last group here.
We focused on...
Oh, wait, can you say your name?
Josh Thomas on Connect Transit. We focused on how the revitalization of downtown would happen, and how the various entities would leverage each other and kind of create a synergy in which there's a kind of multiplier effect of each of the investments.
Wonderful, thank you. Well, I appreciate all of the positive thoughts that were just shared from all of you. Now, what we're going to do is kind of change gears. The last few questions have been aimed at if the Catalyst Tier One project were to move forward. And we've had a chance to discuss that, think about it, and what that may look like. Now, what we're gonna do is we're gonna change gears and assume that the Catalyst Project does not move forward. We've hit some kind of barrier that it's decided that is not going to happen, okay? And assuming that, what will be the risks and benefits of each of these entities moving forward independently, okay? Because we've already heard about some of the work that everyone's been working on independently, right? So we've heard from the public library who produced this nice timeline for us of all of their efforts that have gone into looking at expanding different locations, and how they're at their current point of looking at expanding in their current location. We also heard from Connect Transit that's gonna be doing their own feasibility studies and looking at three potential sites in downtown Bloomington. We heard about what their process is likely to be like. We also heard from the city council with the downtown task force support of some of the needs of the Market Street Garage, its conditions, and the investment that needs to be made in that property. So we've heard about all of these independent things. And so now, again, assuming that the Catalyst Project is not moving forward, what are the risks and benefits of working independently on these projects? And this one, we're gonna give you a longer period of time. Again, you're gonna have 15 minutes like we did with our initial question. And so I will ask...
So Stacy, this meeting was postured to run 90 minutes.
Correct.
So this entire meeting was postured to run 90 minutes. So will we be concluding by 7 o'clock?
I was told that we had 90 minutes to facilitate. And so that is the timeframe we're operating on, which is why we're changing gears at 45 minutes.
And who told you that?
That was information that was shared. I didn't remember specifically who told me that. We've had planning, we had a planning meeting. I don't remember who specifically said that.
Was it your planning meeting? City Council's your planning meeting?
We had, we can again go into the process and all of this further. At this point in time, really what I want to do is use the limited time I have to go ahead and ask these questions. And then I'd be happy to follow up with you, answer any of those questions as well as part of our report. We'll include a record of the decision-making, how it came to be that we facilitated, all of that information. Given your questions, we want to make sure they get answered. But again, I have this limited amount of time. So I'm gonna go ahead and ask that the...
And fairness, I think that's part of contextualizing this work here today, knowing who's had input and who hasn't. So I've heard you say that the city council didn't have input into this process, and nor did the downtown task force. Is that what I heard?
Again, I'd be happy to discuss with that with you at a different point in time, but we have, I understand, and I'd be happy to talk about that more publicly at a later point in time, but I have been given this limited window, and I have been asked to facilitate this in this manner. So I'd like to go ahead and move forward with the questions. And then we'll look to look and see if we can even allocate some additional time for questions about process later on. But let's go ahead and stay focused on these questions and go ahead and make sure we're commed as much as possible with all these wonderful people that we have here in the room. So Mayor, if you can, please put us into recess so we may go ahead and have the discussion. As to, assuming that the Catalyst Project did not move forward, what are the risks and benefits of working independently?
For both entities?
For all three entities. The city, with the Market Street Garage, Connect Transit, with their transportation, and the public library with their expansion.
Can we have recess for the purpose of discussion? Excuse me, sorry.
I've had more than...
Yeah, we kind of tweaked things to respond to some of them already.
You did a continue? I mean, you're going to take you.
But I appreciate it. Oh, yeah, I think it's good. Nope, I think that's great. Trade me well.
Yeah, 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 I mean, Jeff, we're already are. Yeah, yeah.
Well, but can't we think?
I've got... I don't see it yet. I have not seen it. I don't know if it's a test. That there's not a strike.
Yes. But that's...
And this kind of... So that may be crazy. Half inch jump.
Well, there's one of the reasons why.
There's one kind of...
Possibility.
So...
What if we can call ourselves back into session? Thank you so much for your patience.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to move back into session and have our groups here report out into their discussion and what they came up with. So we're going to go ahead and come back here and start with this table.
Okay, so we've got a long list of things, and there's a lot of unknowns, but if they were... All three of the projects were to be considered separately. One of the risks we wrote down is some or all of them may never get completed. That's the definite risk that we have. The total sum of all the individual projects may be more expensive, but on the other hand, they may be less expensive because the combined library and parking deck is going to be a very heavy and expensive building. So we're not sure on that. We definitely need more information. There's definitely a perception issue. There's a perception of lack of support for downtown. There's a perception that we can't figure it out and work together. We saw risks as inefficiencies and possible duplication of efforts when we're looking at various parcels and projects, so there's a problem there. And there's a risk that none of these projects go away. We mean, if we're, you know, if they don't get done, we didn't actually solve the problem, and so the problem just continues to persist. Benefits that we saw of independent projects is maybe they actually get done faster at being individual projects. Again, we don't know. They might be cheaper. We don't know that one either. We talked about that library patrons. Some of them like the idea of the library staying exactly where it is. We also saw a benefit that some of the other proposed catalyst projects might be better suited and have a better possibility of being completed because they're of private-public partnerships as opposed to just public-public partnerships.
Great, thank you. All right, we'll go ahead and look here to this table.
Hey, Olivia Bergis. Risks that we identified, there might not be enough money to go around for all projects. Several funds might be less likely, and then nothing would happen, and we would all miss an opportunity to achieve the various projects. Benefits, if each entity is focused on their needs, they might be better in projects, even though they're separate, might be more consistent with those specific needs. There would be trade-offs. It would allow the different entities to focus on what it is they need to do and their parameters or their prerogative. And the final one is, is that there would be a perception that this would comply with the trajectory that the libraries all already on.
Thank you very much. We'll come up here to this table.
Okay, Alex Cardona with the library. Some of the benefits and risks here for the parking garage, the idea of budget allocation. If that has to go on its own, you're reinvesting in an aging structure, and where does that fall in the CIP? Related to that, then, you have the parking garage, the transfer station, the library as all separate budget allocations as part of the CIP. In regards to the transfer station, you have the risk of losing federal dollars or the ability to garner some of those without that partnership with, let's say, the library or the city. But on the flip side, it allows them more time to vet additional partners, community partners, whether that's in health services or somewhere else. In addition to that, it could, for the transfer station, if they were to work together, speed up timelines. On one side, it could also delay timelines as they're trying to figure out who else they could work with. For the library, in regards to timelines, it could, working alone could accelerate those timelines, and then also to an earlier point benefit to capitalize on the current momentum. Some ideas that have already been floated out there and we've been working on in regards to the trail, close parking, working with some of the other city entities. On the other side of things, working independently, and the library expanding in the current place, we'd have to address additional considerations in regards to some of the things that are under, the waterworks that are underneath in regards to the overall plan that we have put forward in regards to some of the other partners. So maybe moving public works, or even some of the things that are engineering that are underneath the street that we still have to evaluate and work on.
Excellent, thank you very much. Okay, we're going to move back to this table here.
Van Nederen, Public Library. We kind of broke it down one by one. So for Connect, we thought the risks were potential loss of funding that could come with partnerships. Benefits could be that there are more sites open to explore. For the library, a risk would be potential loss of potential increased circulation. That may or may not come with Connect, that potential be gone. Benefits, we'd be able to, the library would move forward as planned and with the current trajectory, and that may lead to ability to serve more people more quickly. For the city, the risk would be what catalyst project, you know, is going to consider moving forward, and the benefit would be making a decision.
Thank you very much, and our master, please.
Okay, so for our under benefits, my side, one of the benefits is that each entity gets what it wants site-wise, location, and time, and the time constraints. Then we look at the risks, one of the risks can come into not doing something, the garage specifically, the garage will be degraded. What would be done with the garage if it's not put to some use? And so that sort of decline and degradation is not something any city wants. We came up with, under the list of what's a benefit for Connect Transit if they wanted to stay where they are to improve that site, decisions have to be made about who's in charge of it, like is it county, is it city, that sort of space? What else am I forgetting? Yeah, well, for the library, the... Yeah, the works, and we've invested a great deal of money and time into that site.
All right, well, thank you all so very much. So now, out of respect for time and different perceptions of timeframes, we're going to eliminate some of our questions and move on to one final question to ensure that we're going to finish here today by 7:30, okay? So one thing that's come up about this, and a question that's been proposed, is the process that came about or how this facilitation came to be. And I wanted to take this opportunity, as I asked the last question, to talk a little bit about that, because in part, along with that history is actually an offer to help. So the reason this came to be actually was because I was at the downtown task force and listening to the report and the ideas that were being shared at one of their meetings. And I had actually suggested to Connect Transit that they consider facilitating a meeting between themselves and the public library to have a discussion on this. And their response is, well, we don't have a facilitator, we can't afford it. And I said, I will do it for free, and let me see if I can't recruit Deb Halbrind to also help us to do this. At that point in time, we drafted a lengthy email in which we explained how we would conduct the feasibility study, including that we would do a survey, we would facilitate the joint meeting, that we would provide a final report after the fact to those groups, and we asked them if they would want to engage in that process and to please let us know. In that very initial email, we made the pledge that I'm still going to make here to you today, which is that we both work with fabulous groups of students who like to work by doing rather than just listening to their professor stand and talk to them about what's going on. We both are kind of in action, research, experiential learning capacities. And I will let you know, I was assigned working on information gathering, resource development, facilitating focus groups, everything else like that. I've assigned a group of my students to work on that this semester, to help aid whatever project is chosen, whatever direction is that people choose to pursue, we are willing to do that. We made that pledge in our initial email, and Deb and I are here again to reiterate our willingness to do so, no matter the outcome, that we're wanting and willing to support your efforts. Because one thing that has become clear in this meeting is that there's a lot more information that everybody needs. I think that that is one thing everybody can agree on, is that more information would be helpful for either the projects moving independently, or if there is a catalyst project to be pursued. So again, that's a little bit of the history, and actually what we went to, and one thing I forgot to finalize in that discussion of the process, is after we went to those two boards, it was their suggestion that we actually invite city council to the meeting as well. So that's when we decided to make the offer to city council to do it as a large joint meeting amongst all of us, and that offer was made. From that point in time, Deb and I then designed the study, the survey, all of which, what we did is we gleaned through tons of the public records and reports that all of you can do. The public library has an amazing section on their website about all of their building and everything they've done to do that. The task force has issued their report, which is very detailed and provides information. I also looked at the last joint meeting minutes from the public library and city council. All of these are the things that we looked at and evaluated to develop and ask the questions we did in the survey, as well as what we did here today. Whenever we circulated the survey, we did provide some basic information with the survey, which included the downtown task force report, the joint meeting minutes from the Public Library and City Council, as well as the library's long-term vision planning, because it kind of outlined what their hopes were as they were looking forward to their future. So those are the things that we did provide. As you heard from Connect Transit themselves, they did not have at that point have any feasibility studies or anything else to be able for us to include in that, but then they were able to provide us that information here tonight as to what they were looking at and what they perceived to be their next steps. So the last and final question in the five minutes that we have left, and what I would ask you to do in honor of time, so we can get out of here at 7:30, is that we are going to recess for five last minutes, and I would like you, in your groups, on a piece of paper, to brainstorm what additional information you need that would be helpful in making this decision. And then we will have all that information, and we'll be able to compile all of that in our final report. And so Mayor, if you can call...
In the interest of time, we're going to be recessed for five minutes.
What else do we need? What do we need?
I think we need to talk about a lot of the things that we need.
To move forward.
More in process.
Okay, I'm saying more in process.
Right, and I would say...
Well, but I don't know, how do you get public library? But we can get some information, try to keep an emphasis on public.
You can find my profile on...
Sorry.
How long do you need your. Needs to be too far. What's up? What's up?
Regardless of where it is, whether, or whether, let's say, let's say we were, let's say one of our projects are the need to assess or could be any of these. But I'll try to. So now you can still want to do that. That's the squaring. That's. So. So library didn't. But they're. Even if. When we're in confidence. You can have that longer. It's still. There's basic business thresholds. It's great, great. I'm just.
I think that's it. I think we need your direction.
I said. There's no point in that. That's. That's. Mark should, of course, he's also. What's weird to me is that. Connect Transit. I'm actually. We. To talk to you. I haven't talked to. And I don't know. The blame, the blame is you're, right? You're asking us to look through and I don't know what that. Your. Any kind of. I think. I'm going to speak. We're going to try. We got to see. Whatever that. Collaborate. Collaborate. Okay. We're going to go ahead and reconvene for our last time. Thank you. And thank you again for your.
There are people on your. They don't want to be working. They aren't set. They aren't. All right, so we have the meeting and we only have three minutes left, but we're hoping that we can. I know we'd ask you to give us a list, but we figure we're going to let, for the public's benefit, you report that out real quickly to the group of additional information that you need so we can get out of here by 7:30. One question that was brought up and raised just as a point of clarification on the survey that was sent out. The survey was sent out only to the attendees of this meeting, so the Board of Trustees for the library, Board of Directors for Connect Transit and the city council members. And that is who the survey went out to and included the mayor. And the survey was answered anonymously. I have no idea how any one particular individual responded to the survey. All information regarding the survey will be reported out in the aggregate. So you have that information. Okay, so quickly, going, Jamie, can you put, I'm sorry, Aldrin Mathie, can you please get it started?
Jamie Mathie. So we had, we would like to see survey put out as scientifically done as possible with college kids that we could pull off. Specifically asking, is there a willingness in the public to fund an expansion of the library? And what opinions might be of moving locations and, you know, especially if we can get federal dollars for a catalyst project? We said we would like to see some research that shows other communities that have done similar projects where we've combined things like a library and a transit center or something of that nature or a library in the downtown to see, did it actually act as a catalyst in those communities? I mean, that was the goal, but did it work? Right? And then we said we'd like to see comprehensive funding lists of what's available that we could possibly go after for each individual sector. So federal funding, state funding, other grants available, where do those funding, what does that whole funding picture of what's possible look like? We thought that that would help in making decisions as well.
Hey, this group, did you have any additions to their list? No, I don't believe it. We, we kind of got stuff a little bit earlier in the process. Okay, we first and foremost, transit needs assessment. From the transit, from Connect Transit. All right, anything else? Okay, our next group here.
Okay, Alex Cardona here again. Some of the additional items we had is expert advice and input to due diligence items from engineers, architects and things like that. Also, a business skill set in regards to greater vetting of downtown ideas and projects, either current or proposed. And specifically empowering our city staff to do what they have been hired and paid to do. And city council buy-in in regards to funding collaboration and capital improvement projects.
Great, great. And this group back here, did you have anything else to add?
We talked a little bit about resident feedback, including town hall meetings, surveys, campaign, and then other projects. I brought up, is the market street garage the only place where this catalyst project could?
Other locations.
Right, other, other potential locations. So we did hear from Connect Transit, they're going to be looking at three sites in theirs if that moves forward. All right, this group right here, any additional information you'd like to?
Yeah, John Bowman, Connect Transit, feasibility of the site that's being proposed over the tier one, including what about state routes? What impact there and happen that be factored into an overall plan? And along with that, what about properties adjacent to the site, plans for those long term? One question, how much do you invest before you get to the point of issuing it to referendum? How much money do you plug into it to even get it to the point of getting to the public input? And maybe the most salient question was, are these groups interested in moving ahead?
All right. Well, thank you all so very much. I know this is unique and different than you've done in the past, but we appreciate the opportunity to work with you. And so Mayor, could you please adjourn the meeting?
Well, actually, firstly, can we have a round of applause for our two facilitators? Thank you all so much. Obviously, this is part of an ongoing conversation and we're going to have to do sort of three waves of adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn Bloomington City Council?
No.
You're not on, sorry. Moved by Alderman Hallman, I'm going to look at Alderman Gray. Second by Alderman Gray. Madam Porter, did you call the roll?
Alderman Mathie?
Yes.
Alderman Sage? Alderman Rumway? Alderman Burgis? Alderman Keter? Alderman Schmidt? Alderman Black? Yes. Yes.
So Bloomington City Council is adjourned. Connect Transit Board Chair Mike McCurdy, is there a motion to adjourn the Connect Transit meeting? So moved from Judy Buchanan, second. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. They're adjourned.
Okay, Alex Cardona, Board President for Library. Do we have a motion to adjourn? So moved by Mayor. By Susan Moore. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed?
We're all adjourned. Thank you, everybody, and thank you.
Thank you so much.
Oh, thank you. I facilitated you tomorrow.
Good job.
I hope you. I love the doctor. So, whoa, that's okay.
Smart. You went pretty well.
No, it was just.